Public hearing, it will pledge fire. Alright, thank you for coming. We will have a short presentation in a minute from Karen and Jago. And then afterwards, we'll public comment. So when you come up to the mic, please speak loud enough so everyone can hear. We're all wearing these masks. And announce your name and address when you come to the mic, please. Alright, the purpose of this hearing is to receive public comment for the purpose of repealing Summit Township's current zoning ordinance in its entirety and replacing it with the ordinance number 2021-02. The Summit Township zoning ordinance and map. Do you want to start, Karen?
For Tammy's point, so please head to the chat. So we wrapped up the comprehensive plan in August of 2018, which led to the update of the zoning ordinance, which was going hand in hand. We listened for a steering committee residence survey surveys and stakeholders elected officials that established rules for the planning process. Some decisions were easy and some were tough, but our goal was the same. Focus was conservative role character, people lining land needs as optimal for areas supported by infrastructure, strengthening economic and community development, enhancing connectivity and insurance, ensuring efficient movement of vehicles and pedestrians, embracing natural resources and amenities, and fostering cooperation with community and regional stakeholders. Why do we have something? Zoning laws are created for a simple purpose, for protecting the health, safety, general welfare of people as they race through land needs. Protecting the value of the investment of property by law. Property is most appropriately an experience, is location, is round uses. Zoning is a mechanism used by government entity to control growth and development. The goal of zoning is to minimize overcrowded and拥挤的carless. Zoning ordinance was property owners' goal, and where they can build on their properties, around the properties, and how those properties can be used. The primary purpose of zoning is to second rate uses that are thought to be incompatible. And practicing zoning can also, is used to prevent public development from being a little bit excessive and or preserve or protect the community. How can I get around zoning ordinance? If you own property that is subject to a zoning ordinance, and that ordinance is prohibited from using their land the way that you intend, you may attempt to go in front of the zoning map or get a variance. I just can't outline some dates, but we received some letters and we've been advertising. In August of 2018, we adopted the comprehensive plan and started working on zoning ordinance. September 4, 2019, we held a public workshop regarding definitions of the zoning ordinance. We had our first public 45-day review in mid-October of 2020, and the second 45-day review was 45-day review of the plan zoning ordinance draft, the hearing committee, and the Summit Township planning commission. It was effective December 22. We had a publication in the newspaper about 3/22. In regards to the planning commission, we are on their agenda for the last two years. We are also on the supervisory agenda regarding repeal of the zoning ordinance. We have a practice agent in the newsletter. We also updated our website periodically. Residents have stopped in and reading our ordinance. The letters that are received in the mail or email were November 27, I received a letter from Jay Jones, May. December 4, I received another letter from Jay Jones. December 28, I received a letter from a petition from Frank Mentee regarding her she rode in zoning. January 14, I received a letter from Michael Marsha-Fanowski regarding the map. January 18, 2021, Joe Lee Ten, sent me a letter regarding the map changes. January 28, 2021, we received an approval letter from your company. February 2, 2021, we received a letter from Frank Mentee, even though the date of hearing. February 16, 2021, we received a letter from Chris Nausa speaking regarding map and his uses on his property. February 18, we received a letter from Matt Lot regarding tiny homes. Our first, we received a letter from Wayne Hubert regarding local parks and rural resources, rural natural resources, and residential diversity. And I just wanted to think of the planning commission for all their input. Interview with Karen and Jago, she's from EPB, we're now in the end of that. They have a little presentation on why we did this. Thank you.
Do you want to stand here and you hear me okay? Yes. I recognize a number of your faces, it's very nice to see you again. We haven't had the opportunity maybe in the planning commission meetings or some of the workshops that have occurred over the last couple of years. So it's nice to see you this evening. But I do want to just go back a little bit in terms of some context. Because some of the questions that came in over the last couple of months are thinking about as items stem from the comprehensive plan process. And so that document, which there were a series of public hearings with that in 2018. So there are two items here which serve as the base. I believe, do all of you have the 8x11 of the two maps? Anybody pick that up out there? If you don't have it, it's okay. They're both found as wall size, but if you do have them, they're one and the same to what's the township is applied with. So let's get started. Alright, so we can go ahead. So Tammy read off a number of the objectives from the comprehensive planning process. And those, then there are objectives within the zoning ordinance, if you can hear me. As part of the overall planning process, Karen has been guiding where we are going with this concept of zoning. There were 800 survey responses, and we just took that as sort of an average part household population. And so about 38% of the township's population was represented in the feedback that we had as it was establishing a direction for the policies, okay? So Tammy mentioned in terms of some of the conservation or preservation of space. Actually thinking about those sort of whole continuum. So we had rural lands, if you keep moving. We have areas that are developed in a very different pattern. We need to respond to that in terms of some of the items of zoning. These are just from a comprehensive, I need to come back to them, because Tammy highlighted a number of them. So we'll keep going to the maps. Okay, so one of the drivers from the comprehensive plan as it relates to the densities that we are assigning and some of the, a few of the district updates have to do with the nature of infrastructure service. So that has been thought about as part of some of the kids. By and large, the minimum lot sizes associated with what is in the existing ordinance are intact, remain intact to the proposed ordinance. So we've not had much there. But just from a general standpoint, a number of years ago, this has been something that the township was ready to continue to ensure back to that health and safety component and thinking about where there is opportunity for development, there's opportunities for conservation, and essentially where the infrastructure goes in single. Let's keep moving. So this is the future land use plan as it's presented in the 2018 comprehensive plan. And this is our general guide of that it is as part of this zoning plan. This future land use plan, this part of the comprehensive plan does not mean as part of the comprehensive plan, we were coming up with these specific zoning map. That is the work that has happened over the last course of years. If there is a general consistency with these two maps, the future land use map and the proposed zoning map. And that is the intent with the municipality's planning. They do not have to be mirrors, but they should be generally consistent with the concepts that are introduced from the comprehensive plan, the 2018 case, and where we are today. There are definitely some things that were introduced as far as the process that have precipitated in what we're doing now. Can you change, okay? One. So when we combine this with the statement I was identifying a few moments ago about infrastructure, there were some of the discussions at that point in time of why were some infrastructure improvements happening? And really, how was that potentially affected either intensities or types of potential neighborhood development and where those may be? Some of those are strictly for health purposes, meaning there was a remedy that was needed in order to ensure that there wasn't something that's going to be a variance in terms of sewage. But then other areas were actually supporting growth, right, in terms of population. Let's keep moving. One thing that I did include, but is not specifically in a larger scale effort as part of this, is the concept of access management and an overload. So there are other infrastructure kinds of policies and policies that the township is looking at. But this is something that then that's most needed for us. Alright. The 2018 also was introducing the recommendation to consider what the process and the possibilities are for redevelopment and infill. So those are two words, right, redevelopment and infill, that were introduced a couple of years ago. So redevelopment is essentially looking at where there are opportunities where something may be constructed now or is constructed now. And in a number of years, it may not be that same thing, right? It is going to have the opportunity to redevelop into something different. Infill, being a different term, is also something that was introduced here as part of this process. And that's looking at where there is opportunity, maybe a parcel has gotten passed over or skipped over through time. Or maybe there is something that where there's going to be some lot consolidation. So part of the discussion and the recommendation in the comprehensive plan was looking at this process. There are a couple of areas that you can see with the blue outline, is everyone able to see that? With the dotted corner? Those were the two specific areas where the concept in the comprehensive plan was introducing this notion of looking at those two areas potentially differ. So that's important for our zoning discussion, that may relate to land use and also access management. You can go forward. One of the comprehensive plan recommendations in 2018 is also introducing a slightly different scenario for configuration of what is happening along the Peachtree corridor. And so there is a change in this as compared to if everyone's looking either at or 8x11 or over here on the right side, where the zoning presently taking all the way down to the southern township property or border. And the notion of what was discussed as part of the feedback and part of those public meetings that occurred was considering what was happening along the corridor and how those properties and road would be able to handle that level of traffic. And what was happening in terms of if moving things to the south, we're going to be continuing sort of that traffic impact. Now, what zoning does not do, it does not stop anyone from doing what they're presently doing, right? Meaning if I own an auto body shop, and my auto body shop is in, gets a different zoning designation, I am still able to operate my auto body shop. Just because the zoning hasn't changed does not mean that my business needs to change. I can continue to operate my auto body shop, just as I have been for the past 23 years. I'm 23 years old, in this instance, saying that I have an auto body shop example, right? So I can continue to do that. What zoning does do is, and when we look at these different classifications, is actually thinking about something new comes in, in what way is that use, that relationship to might be happening with all of the other things around it. So the township has really been looking at what those relationships are. And I believe that's an important thrust of the work that the committee, the planning commission looked at, and all the people who've been making comments. So I think there may be this one question. Wait, so we'll go back to the beginning. So just as a broad overview, how we got to where we are today is really rooted in that 2018 comprehensive plan where there were quite a number of the public meetings, and we had all that feedback. And the map, can you picture this map? Then that is serving as a base for the map changes. There are different district zoning names. You will notice that right in the legend. But by and large, the nature of those districts is generally the same. What we thought was important to address as part of this update was really trying to get the characteristics of each of the districts really down. So that's also then carried forward with the comprehensive plan presentation. Up on the screen, how many of you have had the opportunity to go to the township website and look at this comparison map? Do you have you? Great. So what the township did here was it built a part of this portal, or this GIS, it's working with all of the county parcel data, and then identifying, so on the left is the proposed zoning. And as the slider moves right, right, you see more of that proposal. If the slider moves all the way to the left side towards the windows, this is the existing zone. So again, just a replica in digital format of the two pieces that you have in your hand and that are shown on the computer. So I think this will be valuable, this will be helpful, that's all right, we all have a part of this session. And are there any other major points that I'm going to, I wanted to ask all the questions? So just as a matter of, if everyone signed in, I would like to make sure that we all are understanding if there are comments on this evening that relates to more map oriented things, or if there are text ordinance and things, or if you're here just for general questions. So that make that, I just want to make sure, so we can hear from everyone and understand the meaning, because this is our second review period and build on what we heard in fall and then first second years. I appreciate the time, very nice. I'm going to sit down because I have 15 minutes of introduction and a review now.
Alright, thank you, Karen. Everyone here at the table, any comments before we start public comments? Alright, well now hear from the public. Anyone?
Hear me?
Yeah.
Is that light turned on?
Got the lights on. I applaud all the work, and everybody has done, it's done here. I shot off a town and I talked through the day on initial lineup. Sent her an email, went to the board, invited them to give it. My concern when I was looking at the new orders on mobile home parks, currently they were under V1 and V2 business owner. In the new version, it looked like they're listed under R1, which is rural resources, RM rural natural, and RLD residential or density. And on the definition of that, here it says resource zones are designated to host working agriculture activities and very low intensity residential development. Intention of the community's rural character is ensuring frontiers and performance of sensitive resources such as steep slopes for game deer, plant plants, wetlands, and the boats and the community. And those districts are listed in under as alternative use on special exception. And as our team is with Chairman of the zoning hearing board, and I remember looking at this stuff, we have to make decisions. Under permitted use, we're putting them in areas that are currently at A1, A2, which is low, but on a low intensity residential development. It's hard for us to deny, other than special use, exception, if it meets a criteria. And so it looks like we're plugging them in, we're going to, we're sending to the neighborhoods that we're putting in. I like the mobile home park as a business, they have extremely high density, they're paid for profits, and it's just a bad setup for it. And I hope you consider that you look at that and make a decision on that. That you can probably some more issues down the road.
I'm sorry, Dwayne Houdak, New Road. Go ahead, Dwayne.
Yeah, 2471 New Road, I'm sorry. I think that's all I want to bring to attention. But again, Tammy did mention when we talk, there are concerns that everyone's got his PR easily. From what I understand, you folks may already have addressed that, and if you're hesitant, we need some of the new new zoning, okay? Without your questions from me, I'm happy.
Any questions, Karen? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone?
Well, we're waiting on the two to one, I'm gonna go. First of all, I appreciate all the time and efforts it's put into our new plan, but for our lunch institutions, that's the summit township and the residents. I have a final question. If property owner makes that application for zoning change, it could apply exactly to the new future Summit Township's coming back. Will that request a grant?
Good question, and they aren't allowed to ask for a variance. Anyone that public any landowner is allowed to request a variance. Depends on their zoning hearing board, you know?
I'm not asking for a variance, I'm asking for the zoning request applies for this with any grant.
But I think the answer to the question, I mean, what you're saying is if someone comes to the zoning office and they want to use the property for the purpose which the new map identifies, then it can be used. And the answer to that question is yes, once the new map is adopted and the ordinance is approved.
Of course, right. So if you, if that, automatic is the wrong term for it, but if you comply, if you wish to comply with the future plan, then that would be too fair for me and, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, there is, I think it's, automatic is probably the right word. I mean, as long as your use applies, if the use hasn't identified that zone, then yes.
Very good, also the property of this plan, thanks for talking.
Nice.
Hey, everyone, nice to see you from this side of the podium.
You're still doing your name.
I will hear that. I'm A.C. Auguste, the 241 Curtis Road, of a township. I have one question to begin with. Tammy, you listed all of the correspondence we received, including ones today, was there a reason you didn't listen? I called the authority on, yeah, Kurt, that's the call. Okay.
Is that the correspondence we received today?
Yes. She said she had listed that.
I think she put the list together prior to today.
Well, we didn't say that in the newsletter, so I did, no, that can't.
We didn't receive an email from you.
Yes, you did. And I just want to explain what my concern is of it. Especially with zoning terminology. It's like insurance, it's like legal terminology, it's very specific, and unless you use it all the time, it's hard to understand. Most of the township residents are completely unaware of the most substantive changes to the zoning ordinance and how their property could be directly impacted. With that and transparency in mind, what steps have been taken over the last three years in addition to the legal requirements you listed? To educate residents regarding the most important changes. For example, the new mixed-use regional district, and what that zoning change means to owners of single-family dwellings. I own a single-family dwelling in that zone, and it's been changed. And I don't know if the regular public understands that once that change comes about, that's why they were talking to you about the zoning hearing board. I have a single, single-family dwelling. If I want to make any change to it, it will now be a legal non-conforming use. We're requiring you to go before the zoning hearing board to add depth or report or relish. In the zoning ordinance, section 701.1, and this is of the new ordinance. Section B, it is the intent of this ordinance to permit these non-conforming uses to continue until they are removed. Such uses are declared by this ordinance to be incompatible with permitted uses in the district involved. Non-conformities may be enlarged and expanded as determined by the zoning hearing board. Now, another problem comes into play. The new mixed-use regional took all the special exception uses of V1 business and made them permitted principal uses in the mixed-use residential. And now, as residents on a special exception, we have the zoning hearing board to protect us with special conditions and things to make those uses more compatible with where they were going. Now, that's not required. And do you realize where this zoning is? I'd like to show you, just so everybody understands. I live on Curtis Road, it's a little no outlet road, there's five houses on it. It was bisected by I-90, so it's now a no outlet road, right here. Now, I was R1 residential, and now I will be residential low density. Directly across the street from me, and this is not a massive street, is the mixed-use regional, including the existing mobile home park and 15 single-family dwellings that surround it. Non-conforming users, do you know what else is there? It's the school. How are we protecting our school? Has anybody been there lately? I take two grandkids to school. And in the mornings, the traffic is back up on the Robinson Road, and people trying to get to work can't get there. Because parents dropping their kids off can't get into the parking lot, it takes a whole time and process. Now you're going to add Now, you're going to add potentially a bar or nightclub across the street? Or maybe, let's see, whatever uses? Across from Robinson Elementary? How about a campground? Or a nightclub? Or a transitional dwelling? Or halfway house? I need some answers. And the public was not educated. We have a newsletter, I went back over the last two years, nothing. The last time we did a comprehensive plan, in 2000, it was years in the making, we took puzzle pieces, and each time the newsletter came out, we showed a puzzle piece. This is what we're working on now, this is how it impacts the public. Nothing. I wasn't even sure reading the newsletter article about tonight. If you were just approving the transportation plan, future transportation plan, or the zoning act. But it's the map. You've gone this far, and nobody knows what you're doing. So, that was my question, and then another really critical one. Another area where zoning is drastically changed. You see the strip zoning? I, for 19 and Route 97? That's a business use. Now, I realize strip zoning is not ideal anymore for planning. But did you specifically notify all these people that they no longer have business zoning? Kami, can you tell me, what's the process in a regular zoning?
Nancy, more responding questions, are you just?
Okay, well, I guess. Well, I guess my comment would be, I'll answer that question. Everybody who would be impacted within a 1,500-foot radius would be sent a personal letter, letting them know that their zoning would change. Did anybody get a letter?
Let me just address that last point, Nancy's incorrect, regarding that notice requirement. Because this is a comprehensive zoning ordinance rezonance. Therefore, you do not send individual letters of notice to property, because you send the overall notes, and the individual letters would not be sent that are not.
I guess you misunderstood.
Individual letters were not sent.
I, I, I guess you must understood, what I am saying is that if it was not part of the comprehensive plan, if it was just one little rezoning affecting, just say, my neighborhood, or just these people, everyone would have gotten a letter. And, um, comprehensive plan is different. But.
Because otherwise, we would, we would have to send a notice to every resident throughout the entire sub- township, which would be possible. Therefore, that's why you do the public notice as required. But the statute specifically indicates that if you're going to do an overall comprehensive rezonance, then individual letters are not needed. And that's why you have a comprehensive plan, it goes through the process. I think Carol has other, uh, response, Carol, let's see, Carol has some other responses to some of your points.
I did have a couple of questions. I did have a couple of questions, I just wanted to clarify. So, uh, from, let me look to that. All right, so, uh, the area that's being referenced presently, near identifying, would be the residential low density as proposed. And that same area, and you're on the east side, is that correct, Kurt?
I live on the east side, but I own another home on the west side, so I'm on both sides.
So presently, uh, the east side is R2.
Correct.
And then the west side is B1.
Correct.
Right, all right, and so B1 is also all the way up to the northern township line. So, the shape in which, um, the B1 existing does have some similarity with what the proposed, uh, mixed use is. There are some differences on the western side of it. And then there was also significant discussion, um, as we look at the 2018 comprehensive plan, to identify and reclassify, uh, south of Robinson Road, uh, some of the area where B1, that same character and possibility of what was happening. North of 90 would be south. So, there is a set of changes here that are happening as part of the resident, the non-residential classifications. So, that, uh, across, on the western side of Curtis is a business district presently, and it would be the business district as proposed on our map today. One of the other things that was referenced, I believe, I want to make sure I'm understanding. When we look at what the discussion, the series of many, many discussions were, and actually, the comprehensive plan had a specific pullout to the 19 corridor, to talk about the change where there was going to be a difference. That is correct. There is a difference of what is happening with the, these two corridors in terms of its density. And the expectation of those discussions from 2017 and 2018 leading to this conference was really focused on the, the quality of life happening along these two corridors, the intent of different types of traffic as it continues to go south, and what that means for some of these lands. The fact also, if we can go back, please, to the infrastructure map, where the, right, right. So, we're looking also in the township and all of those hundreds of residents that were participating in that process, we're looking at what was happening from an infrastructure standpoint. And so, when we identify that there is not the anticipated in, public infrastructure service in the southern portions of these corridors, the balancing message and act of what do we do with the zoning in terms of those larger lots that actually wouldn't be necessary because there's not public infrastructure. So, there was a conscious route of thought about how these two corridors do have a shift. So, we look at that, um, element of what is non-conforming, that is correct, because if there are, there are businesses in some of these areas, and those would be those non-conforming situations. But to continue that sort of expansion of business, but not having the infrastructure, the public infrastructure support, that's where that balancing act came into play, and why there is one of the more extensive shifts on the map from what is existing to proposed. So, I think from the, um, questions about sort of what led into some of those things, I thought that is important to highlight how the comprehensive. If there's a different, um, train of thought and wanting to shift, um, the 2018 direction, I think that would just need to be discussed, but as illustrated, it is a whole what the plan is seeking to implement.
Just a clarification, when you mentioned, okay, this is already B1, so that way it's, you know?
No, I don't want.
Well, I think that it's the P91, and it's the same. Well, that entire column, I didn't count the number of uses, there must be 50, are no longer per special exception. That's a huge, huge change.
In the, um, B1 district presently permitted by uses of the, uh, my, uh, so this. The permitted uses by right in B1 presently are, uh, antenna on a pre-existing structure, automobile sales, automobile service, car and truck wash, churches and community houses, clubs, communication building, computer operations center, essential services, financial services, fire stations, fuel lines, funeral homes, governmental services, indoor entertainment facility, libraries, motels and hotels, multi-family dwellings, museums, offices, office buildings, outdoor entertainment facility, personal services, professional services, public utility corporation building, restaurants excluding drive-in, retail wholesale business with indoor storage, uh, area adjacent to business for warehousing of goods and products merchandised by the business, research, research laboratories, schools, uh, travel trailer, and recreational vehicle sales and services. The special exceptions, uh, in this area, in this, uh, B1 district in your red, uh, district, um, primarily, uh, in the northern portion is a concentration, and again, uh, in the corridors, there is one area over here as well. A veterinary clinic is a special exception, people all be going in front of the zoning hearing board. Uh, automobile and truck towing service, bottle club, day and night care facility, family day, uh, night care home, group day night, uh, group day night care home, uh, day and night care center, a family or a group home, a high-rise sign, hospitals and clinics for humans, kennels, light machine shop, light manufacturing and light fabrication, miniature golf, mobile home parks, outside storage, personal care boarding homes, go-karts, pitching and batting cages, restaurants with the drive-in, single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, water recreation and storage, and many storage warehouses. So, one of the things I think, uh, I was recalling, the, the points is that single-family dwellings is presently a permissible special, uh, use by special exception in the B1 district. In the mixed-use regional, the two-family as well as the multi-family, uh, are remaining as uses. And the single family was removed because in context of this area now being more specific and concentrated to the interchange area with 90 and Peach Street, as well as this area on the eastern side, the intent is that we're looking at these areas specifically to promote the non-residential side or, and the denser types of residential. So, that was a change. Uh, and then other areas that were previously B1, um, that have changed in, in their zoning are now able, um, to accommodate some of those, as well as then, uh, the different types of density. So, there was a change. So, if I'm understanding, possibly, if you're requesting, uh, I, this is my question, that, uh, would be, are you requesting that single-family dwellings be re-added in as a use within the mixed-use regional?
I guess, okay, uh, to address that with respect to my neighborhood, if you, if that is not done, I have an empty lot next to the home that I own in the new district, okay? There was a single-family dwelling there that burned down three or four, eight years ago, whatever.
You're talking the business district now?
Yeah, in the business, on the other side from my home.
West side, yeah.
There are one, two, there were three homes, one of them burned down. So, it's been more than 12 months. So, that use would cease to exist. So, by doing the zoning this way, you're forcing that that lot be developed with the new ordinance as a business use and run a single-family dwelling. And if you saw my neighborhood, it's a little no-outlet street. And to put a business there would be ludicrous. The other concern I have, by removing single-family dwelling, you just made legal non-conforming uses out of 300 mobile homes that are all single-family dwelling in the new MUR.
But it's in a mobile home park.
It is in a mobile home park, but you've got now, the zonings for mobile home parks were very hard to understand because they're all different now. Mobile home parks are in a specific district, and I don't even think they're listed in the MUR. I didn't see mobile home park. It is not.
So, I, I, I think from a question of your specific recommendation, uh, is to, what, asking you to, for, is to reincorporate single-family dwellings, that is what, something you're proposing?
Somehow, at least as a special exception, but when you read those very long lists, that second whole very long list was under special exception only. And if you read all the uses in the new MUR, it would have been, what you read plus another 30% as permitted principal uses.
Right.
Not special exception.
Correct.
There's almost nothing that requires a special exception in that district.
Well, part of what's also happening in this area is the, um, overlay as the master planning that needs to happen. So, there's a different kind of combination, and also the township would be considering as part of this, meaning that when there is redevelopment, that it is happening in a more coordinated way within, uh, this area, right, in terms of that overlay, uh, area applicable into the MUR. So, I think there's also something, um, that would be balanced out with the combination of those uses and the access. So, I think if I'm understanding what you're requesting, is there any other question? So, you have a lot, what was?
No, I think you might, uh, the mixed use does still allow residential uses, just not the simple, you know?
Correct, so there would be the two-family, uh, and the.
And the lot I'm speaking of is very small, it had an older mobile home, and there would be no way of putting a multiple-family dwelling, even a two-family dwelling. So, they could not, uh, according to the ordinance, use that lot residential.
Well, obviously, there will be a process that you go to the zoning hearing board, if it can't be used for a start use, there is a position used to be used, that's, that would be requested, right?
But again, me and every person in that mobile home park and those 15 homes surrounding, all have to pay $500. Because the property that I, I mean, I think my, my home on the other side isn't protected, not been protected for like years. A very quiet, no-outlet street, bordering mixed-use regional. And you talk about the Carmageddon south of I-90, this is also I-90. And it's across the street from the elementarys.
I understand, no, that's, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If someone else had a turn in, uh.
Thank you for any other questions.
Unless you have any, any other questions in terms of, I think, you understand, what's, that will make?
All right, someone else like to speak? Come on up.
If you provide your address, maybe it would help.
Uh, I got it, 150 Gerald Road. I could serve as the, uh, and this is, I just picked this up tonight, so, um, I'm trying to figure out this, on this mixed, uh, use regional.
Sure, the mask. Thank you.
Next, we've reноved it on the second page, so that soon treatment plans. Trying to figure out, I did try to put on a process sheet a couple of years ago. So, that's, that's my question here, how is this zoning ordinance related to this? So, I'm trying to look at this map here. Here's my roads. And, uh, this mixed-use regional, this purple area, on the back here, it says, uh, on the back here, it says sewage treatment plant. Does that possibly be able to be put in?
I don't know. I'll ask Mark. He's on, he's on our sewer authority. But I do know that they own this property.
Right. They own this property across the street.
And that's right near Old Perry Highway.
Correct.
So they try to, it's a retention thing.
They might order that. They moved that thing. Just trying to get a, this.
I'm gonna let Amy take care of this one.
Do you want me to kind of take a stab at that?
Sure.
I can't remember if it was a special exception or permitted use. But the reasoning behind that and the sewage, the sewer authority had no intention of ever putting in a sewage treatment plant. Not to say that it'll never happen. Because 60 years from now, they might have to. So part of the requirement to have a sewage treatment plant is a place to outfall sewage treatment. So it's usually a little line area, which would be, in this instance, Walnut Creek. So the envision, the planning there was if, for some reason, the Mill Creek line ever gets to the point where we cannot put sewage down through there, and the sewer authority had to build a sewage treatment plant, the most likely spot for that to happen is probably by the Taco Bell or their pump station is now. It's the Lotus Point. And you'd have that outfall in the stream for the treated sewage water. So that's kind of why I got put into that zone. I can't remember a special exception.
The sewage treatment plant is identified in the draft as a special exception.
Okay.
There are essential services allowed throughout the township. As of the minute. The sewage treatment plant, which your asking specifically, would be what matters.
And that was the thought process behind that. So it was purely on.
Anything's a possibility.
But I can tell you, the sewer authority has no plans to build a sewage treatment plant anytime in our lifetimes.
The last conversations that they had, they were extremely far-fetched. It was run a direct line to the wastewater treatment plant down at the city area. And it was about a $90 million project, just fall apart. So, you know, there's been a lot of conversations, you know, to handle all the sewage that's generated from Summit Township. And we can only put so much sewage into Mill Creek Township's line by agreements. They're forever investigating different ways that, you know, we can handle it. And, you know, we've seen a pretty good decrease in sewage flows as well as, you know, the water flows. To try and look into the crystal ball and figure out where we're gonna be, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now. Floyd Rose just retired from the super authority after 40 years. You know, the changes that he's seen, just amazing. You know, we're always trying to look into the crystal ball and figure out what the best-case scenario is to try to keep, you know, Summit Township's sewage flowing and not creating any, you know, health problems within our township. It's very difficult, very difficult. Thank you.
That's right. My power is transferred through the Mill Creek lines to the city area to the city area wastewater treatment plant. So over the years, the pipe pipes aren't really big enough for massive amount of volume. And that's where, long-term, it's a real problem, correct, Mark?
Correct.
All right.
To further answer that question, just so everybody's clear, that's what the answer to the question is. The question is inverse sewage treatment plant. That is a use that would be permitted on that property by special exception. Permitted principal uses under that designation, as indicated by Caroline, would include essential services. If you turn page 19 of the ordinance, there's a definition of essential services. And it gives you specific examples of what's permitted and not permitted in regard to sewage. And so to understand what could be put on that property under essential services, I think you should read the definition of essential services under the definition on page 19. It does certain parts of sewage process are permitted as a permitted use, with no special exception required. Other things are not permitted, but as an essential service. And so it's important for you to read that to understand what can and cannot go into the mixed-use of the culture.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? No more comments?
Okay. My name is Mr. Espey, 8772, 37th Drive. And I have concerns over extending business area along Town Hall Village. We have potentially 14 business properties moving into that area and will impact about 200 homes in that area. And I want to understand, would it make the volume from a 400-foot cut back to whatever the number you can go up? I don't remember. I was on conference call. I have to remember that conversation halfway at that point.
Well, as it is right now, Bruce, it's 11 properties to itself that a business can build within 50 foot of the property. That's why we come up with the 200.
Right. So if you would have 250 and maintain a 400, which supervisors in the past had thought too good idea. And that's the reason that the development has grown by the half. And then it's like moving a boat aisle for each and both of these things. You could consider that kind of change in that particular area. A lot of those.
Let's say it's 11 properties self-fulfilling.
Right.
A business at this time, 50 foot from their property.
For the new ordinance, it would be 200.
Correct.
It's moving up 250 feet farther.
And at the north end of the subdivision, even when I live, it's going to lose. That includes me, which, you know, right now, I've probably got 500 foot there. It's off the 400 foot right away from the road. But I'm still happy with 250. So.
Right. So Bruce, what do you send there is one?
What I'm saying is, like, behind my property, I have over 400 feet to the 400 foot mark. What they're allowing them to do is close upon that area. I don't fully understand why it would be 200. I mean, there's a lot of business property in that. There's a lot of people in there. It's a lot of people in there. I'm not sure anybody in that area would understand what's going on. On the back, whatever you guys are plugging about, I'm notifying everybody that is impacted by some changes. I got a, I got a letter about something happened over two months, a couple of months ago. And I'm not quite sure why I'm not notified. But if you look right there, there's only about 14 business properties that could potentially move in there. Counted the number of people that are living in that subdivision. Why would you move that closer to the property? I'm looking at right now, like, there's three that are saying.
Well, that zoning line, you know, starting at Town Hall Road and working its way down, Bruce, there's, there's gotta be a dozen homes there or more.
Correct.
That are gonna benefit by having the 250 foot.
More than 250, but don't change the 400 and 100 around. Why wouldn't you change it up?
So in the comprehensive plan discussions of 2018, there was a wake of focus on this dimensional characteristic. And so the approach that was selected as part of this was actually giving the equal buffer to all of the residents from their back property line to the west.
And we're at all four.
So if, what I hear you saying is that you would be in support for providing the comprehensive plan because it had a different recommendation, that that footage was deeper and in the comprehensive plan. So that's what the township has reflected after it had gone through that discussion. But the change being that all of the residents within that funny neighborhood now have an equal offset of that buffer, rather than some people who went all the way to the residential neighborhood line and others didn't.
And they made it all 400? That's all, they can be at all 400? Why would you move the other?
So you don't think 250 feet's enough, Bruce, for you to buffer?
Matter of fact, I can hear news on Lobster, we're planning today.
And we're trying to add some of those too. I mean, Peach Street is the business corridor. I mean, it's a phenomenal business corridor. And there's, you know, we don't want to see car dealerships over there. We'd love to see the little classes like that are in there right now and controllable on that trend. I know we can't control that with that zoning district. But I don't know if the properties are deep enough. And I believe there may be environmental impacts down through there that would create anybody from, you know, even developing the property.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Could you give us your hand? First matters last week, and I live on Glen Cove Road. My property is being re-zoned from high occupancy, or R2, so the high occupancy old building dwelling, to agricultural. Although I don't have any particular land to develop, R2 property. Consider myself a small real estate investor with multiple properties in Mill Creek. And if somebody, their summit, or they went down, I don't have any plan to develop the property. But it was purchased with the, kind of a insurance policy that my son, when I'm in the ground, wanted to sell it and capitalize on the investment. And it was R2 being more use that he could do so. And now to take it out of ways for my family, the, that sucks.
Who lives there?
Yeah, I currently live there. And like I said, I don't really have a plan to do that. I like where I live. I'm not knocking down the trees. I have a simple house there and I just hunt on the rest of it. So, but it was purchased as R2. And it was kind of like, kind of an insurance policy as an investment for me and my family to move forward. That area, being that close to town, in the next 20 or 30 years, if it's a, you know, my family will likely hopefully drive and, you know, if my son or whoever wants to sell it at that time, was kind of in my, that was one of the reasons I purchased that land. And it paid the value that it did, because it was R2. And fortunately, fortunately.
I have to say.
I was supposed to start with 97 first?
No. Well, of course, we, it was originally, I think I had first. We divided, they had another person that did have access to that. It didn't seem prior to the strange and the outcome change.
Yeah, and similar, just to cure your pain. But I bought four acres of land around 97, probably six years ago. 800-foot chronic water subject approved. Had visions of my son building, he's a plumber. Wanted to build this little shop there. And that's what we, you know, spent good money on to do eventually. Put in the, in the spirit of the comprehension plan and, you know, to envision a Tim Hortons there or Sheets or something right on across from the game lands and, you know, residents on either side of it. You know, when I saw that it was gonna go to rural resource. Natural, is that sound great down there? You know, we sat there, we looked at that angle. You know, it's what the properties should be in the spirit of summit and have a business there. It's not where business should be. It's a beautiful setting out there. And I get why people looked at, traveled that little road. It's gorgeous, you know? Never, it's just part of change, I guess. Some of the change is great and everybody appreciates. Other part of change is not so good, you know? It's a real different take with this, trying to make everything work. It's very difficult.
I can understand what you're saying there, but my property is like right up against another day. Which challenges it. And I guess that, that's like.
The extension of Glen Cove, basically.
Like I said, I don't have any, I didn't have any grand plan to knock down all the trees and put it right through the top and tomorrow. But it was.
In the back here.
It's something that I made an investment, just like I did with the properties in other countries.
And I mean, it's something we can look at, correct?
What, do you need to also look at that discussion, Mark, that you were just making? So the, this is from the comprehensive plan again. And the infrastructure maps that we were provided as part of the sanitary sewer service areas were classified. So from those, we, this is the whole map. And on the left side of it, there were those designations of interest, extension is the plant, which is the wider stripe. And there were three purposes that were assigned to what could be supported based on density and the case of the existing system. So the three purposes that the township is dealing with as part of the system is thinking about the supporting public health. Meaning there was something happening that needed to be corrected in order to improve the health of the land and the people there. Supports continued service and then supports community growth. So in what the township was examining as part of sort of this system, zoom into where you are, and the careful sort of puzzle pieces that you guys are talking about really get into. So the, the growth is the purple or up to the north side of Nalu. The blue is where the, our smaller striping is existing. So that's sort of right above Jack's seat there, right? It's the narrower stripe. On the east, to the east of that, there are blue areas. On the east, to the east of that, there are blue areas that would, or that are planned to be serviced. And then there are green areas to the south of where, I believe you are served, right, in terms of looking down towards a portion of the southern area. So the infrastructure sewer service planning, combined with the land use, is something that could be a significant balancing act to what Mark was just identifying. And so when we look at what the zoning designations are on the proposal, can I give this to Amy? And if you'll note where sort of that tooth comes down, in the blue, line that up, that is where the yellow, where the residential, Old Dynasty residential is. So that blue line is following where the yellow and the green are distinguished. So that was using the infrastructure as a tool for the township to recognize that those kinds of densities and the system to support those kinds of densities was being considered. So I recognize what your investment is and the plans in the form that you're living in, that you both, portion of the township, and considering those larger scale infrastructure planning needs that the township has in front of it, a part of the food bigger system, that is just one of the factors that went into where that yellow line now has a difference over the three lines itself. If it wasn't, it wasn't looking headed to that stroke, we just want to
Yeah, certainly agricultural, yeah, R2.
So it is zone pad presently with the yellow, but there's not any infrastructure that is planned to be able to support the density that are permissible there, and that's where the township needed to evaluate what was going to be able to be supported.
So if it wasn't, you know, wasn't, it would be supported, what part was it done that way? A couple years ago, my thought. Uh, it just, it, it was on R2, and, and I guess my idea was that maybe in the future, R2 is more valuable than agricultural. If someone wanted to continue developing that, that neighborhood into a bigger neighborhood, R2 would carry with it a higher valuation. I, that paid harder money for that property in its state, and I'm changing it. That sucks.
Right. Your property split down the center, and you, it's very complicated.
Well, it's not, it's not going to be split down the middle anymore, it's just
So if we move to the left.
Oh, right.
All right, so you try to make this sit here, identifying, if someone has one of these properties that is currently split zone, but they come in to request that there be a zoning designation change on their property, is that your question?
Yeah, that's a lot.
So the answer is yes, I mean, anyone could come in and request a rezoning, that needs to then be considered for other townships and this list of specific steps that we're leaving out, but it would just need to be evaluated as part of what is compatibility or how it fits in altogether in your town. So yes, that, that would happen. So there are quite a number of along that line. I think, though, from a standpoint of, if there were a different map, meaning it wasn't split, but it had that tag designation, if there was something that, again, someone wanted to come in and request a rezoning, they're certainly able to do that, so we need to identify how that's compatible, again, in the same sort of fashion, right, with what's going on around it, and if it has those densities or if there's some other investment or infrastructure to support the type of density. So I think, I mean, over that course of the 2017, 2018, and then as we moved into, the township moved into thinking about where those infrastructure service area designations are, and those are things that you have sort of coming at you, and what you do with them was, was definitely about.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Comments? One more call, anyone else, comments, remarks? Third call. Hearing none, motion to adjourn, this special call period, public, public period.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry.
All in favor?
I hear.
All right.